Good afternoon, everyone. I want to welcome you to this McCormick County regular scheduled monthly meeting here on October 21st, 2025 at 6:00. Great crowd to come out today on this beautiful fall-like afternoon here in McCormick. Just want to make sure that you're welcome and look forward to being a part of our meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Brown to do her invocation and Mr. Moore to do our pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. We come this evening having Father gathered for the purpose of doing the business of McCormick County. We thank you for all of those that are gathered here with us tonight, while we thank you for the many blessings you've given to us. We ask that thou continue to bless us and keep us and help us to do what's in the best interest of our county. All ye sons, we pray, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. Thank you, Ms. Brown and Mr. Moore. Okay, at this time, Ms. Lawrence Jerome, call please.
Bernie Hamby.
Present.
Charles Jennings.
Present.
Chuck Cook.
Present.
Jackie Brown.
Present.
David Marham.
Present.
G.P. Callison.
Present.
James Upchurch.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum. At this time, I need a motion to accept the approval of minutes for September 16th and September 23rd. What do I hear?
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion or corrections on the minutes? Here are none. All in favor, right hand? Good deal. At this time, we're going to do our, take our presentations, our guests.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just before we come with our presentation, we like to amend the agenda. We have Three River staff here, the bond attorney and the staff people. They're here to give us an update on this $30 million bond you see on your agenda about the cost of building another sale for our garbage and before we know Tri County considers us Ed Field Salula in McCormick County. And then when we collect our trash, we had to take it down to Three River, and that's where they had to bury it. And so that sale is bought out, and they're here to give them their explanation why it don't cost as much money they say it was going to cost. So we appreciate that.
Okay, I've got a motion to add Mr. Scott Rips to our agenda. I get a second.
Second.
You have a second. Any further discussion? Here are none. All in favor, right hand, to add him to our presentation list. You'll be our third presenter, Mr. And you can introduce your folks if, you know, if you feel led to. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Indy White to come forward, please, with her presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, Council Administration in McCormick County. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I'm going to try to keep this brief because we are training, so we had to take a hiatus to come over here. So we are on schedule to migrate to our new CAD next Tuesday, the 28th. We are training this week. Everything's been going smooth so far, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. So we will be NG 911 ready as of Tuesday of next week. Just a little update on the first responder bill. Senate did pass S 725, Enhancing the First Response Act. That was passed on September the 10th. So we're just waiting now. The companion bill in the House, they're still waiting to vote on that. That one is the 911 Saves Act, which is Bill HR 637. Now, if those bills are enacted, here are the four things, four provisions that would happen. Of course, the reclassification of dispatch from clerical to protective service would be protective service versus first responder, which gives you the same benefits. It just changes us in the standard occupational guide federally so that we can receive those benefits. What it will also do is require the FCC, which the FCC is the governing body of 911 due to it being a phone. So the FCC? I didn't do anything. So the FCC will have to issue a report after major natural disasters on the extent to which people were unable to reach 911 during a disaster and the recovery efforts and come out with a resiliency plan. So that is great as well. It would also improve, would have improvements to the outage network reporting. So what they would do is in one year after this is passed, the FCC would have to investigate as to why the phone companies like AT&amp;T, Verizon are not reporting to us when there is an outage and why. And it would also implement CARRY's Law. It was put into law in 2017. It hasn't really been pushed. What that does is for the multi-line telephone system, so like what we have here, what you see in hotels, they don't have to dial nine to dial 911. You don't have to dial a prefix or a postfix. You can just dial 911 and it goes through. There was an instance where a child was trying to dial 911 for a parent in a hotel room, and she didn't know to dial nine to get out. So that's why that was passed. So those are the four key provisions in that bill. Just wanted to give you an update as to where we are on that. All right, so we are here tonight. Last week, we attended the South Carolina AppCo NINA 911 Conference. We took an array of classes, learned some interesting information that we're going to package and put out to our employees and roll out. This year, we had two awards we were awarded. The first award is nominated by the director to one of her, one of their employees for outstanding work. This employee that we have, she's grown over the last year. She's helped me in so many ways and taken over the training, seeing that I needed the assistance and did that as well as stepped into some administrative roles. So that award is called the South Carolina Palmetto Award, and this year, our South Carolina Palmetto Award went to Mrs. Zoe Rowe. The team that was working the night of the hurricane, they fielded over 170 calls from 3:30 a.m. until 9:00 a.m. that morning. They were in the hot seat for 18 hours straight because the relief couldn't get there. And they were overwhelmed. They worked through it. They were professional. And the Team 911 Award of Merit winners, and mind you, this is a competitive award. We had to go against other counties with this one, so I'm very proud of my folks, y'all. So that award goes to Tasha Williams and Mr. Noah Laducia. I have to go work a console so they can check, train, so I'm going to have to step out this week. Are there any questions?
Yeah, just one brief question. Can you update us on the upgrades to our communication system with the One-Cent Sales Act project? Just haven't heard.
We don't have a project in the sales tax.
The upgrade to the radio equipment for our fire stations and all that.
No, that will be.
Before we get an update. I was just curious of where we were on it. I know we had started it and just, yeah, for public information. But my final comment, and then council more than welcome to comment too on what, you know, this time, a little over a year ago, the tragedy that we were all facing and the work that our EMS and law enforcement and all the different agency coming together to save people's lives. We were so blessed that we did not have any major fatalities like some of the other counties surrounding us. Just amazing what was accomplished, you know. You just can't thank everyone that was involved enough. There's no way to thank you, but it's just pure dedication. And McCormick County has always been extremely blessed with one of the best small county EMS services in the state of South Carolina. And they, we have won national awards with their dedication, so I just wanted to comment on that. Any other council's comment?
I would, I would make, I would make this comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think it's difficult to imagine how chaotic, how disruptive the lack of telecommunications is in a county when things happen like they happened during Hurricane Helene. I know I was, I was driving out of the county every day to try to find a hotspot where my cell phone would work. And a lot of the calls that I was making were to WCTEL, to Verizon, and to other service providers, trying to find out when our service was going to be restored. And so when you're in emergency communications and everything goes down, I mean, it can be, it can be a totally exasperating experience, both for the people who are working dispatch and for the people who are calling in and needing help. And I think, I think our people handled it extremely well under very trying circumstances, and I'd just like to personally congratulate all of them for the hard work they did during the emergency.
Thank you for that. And again, like I said, and this bill is making provisions so that doesn't happen again.
Correct.
Or at least there's an answer, because right now, we don't have any answers. We haven't had any answers.
Correct. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was delighted, all sorts of things, with Ms. White, Ms. White and all your staff people for the service you done and how we came together. Because this is the first time in McCormick County experiencing what we spent, experiencing with Helene, just all losing all of our power, but you, you didn't cave in. Y'all hung in there, and we just thank all, all, all the people that were working with you, and that you ain't stopped. That's a good thing. You still working, trying to get, when you sit down and analyze what went good and what didn't go good, and you've been working on that. And here you come telling us some good news, communication going to be better, and we hope we don't, we don't have another storm, not like the one that we did have. And so we just thank all of y'all for the job well done.
Okay, anyone else?
Just congratulations to the people who received the awards at the state level. It's truly outstanding, and we thank you guys for working together because we know you couldn't do it on your own. It took a team effort, and we're grateful for that.
Sweet.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, long-awaited William Lamb, Thomason Hutton. Our drainage study is finally here.
All right. Everyone here me okay?
Yes, sir.
I assume the clicker works. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of council. My name is William Lamb. I'm with Thomason Hutton. We're the engineering firm that assisted the county with the recent countywide drainage study that was funded by a Rural Infrastructure Authority grant. We've got a, hopefully, a brief presentation for you tonight, but we're going to try to cover it from start to beginning, but as, as much in summary form as possible. So to give you a little bit of background on, on the project and kind of why, where it began, going back to 2023, the county had three triple culverts off of, I guess, go under Elam Drive that were on the verge of failure. If the road, if the culverts were to fail and the road would have become inaccessible, it would have cut off about 20 residences from egress, ingress to the, to their homes. Obviously, that would have been a bad situation, so the county was able to apply for and get some CTC funding under an emergency project to repair those culverts. Following the completion of that project, county staff began asking questions about, well, just how many culverts do we have? And pipes as well, and then, you know, what's their condition? And should we expect to have more issues like this coming, coming down the pipe in the, in the future? So that was sort of the impetus for this, this drainage study. So the county applied for and received an RIA grant. As I mentioned, the bullets here sort of outline the scope of that grant, and it ranged, and, and this was basically what the, these are the items that the study addresses. So outlining the goals of, of the, we're calling it a capital improvement plan, reviewing what we call the county's level of service and extent of service policies. I'll talk about that in a few minutes. Documenting the quantity, condition, and location of the existing drainage infrastructure, categorizing the infrastructure based on its condition, age, and expected lifespan, developing a repair plan and replacement plan for what we think needs to be considered for future replacement and also to think about budgeting, develop recommendations for new infrastructure based on our desktop assessment. And then the big, big thing was making a funding plan to make sure that the county's looking far enough ahead to make sure that you've got enough money to address these needs in the future as they come. So the first item I mentioned was the level of service, and this is more of a policy document. The capital improvement plan does outline these things in a little bit more detail, but basically, the goals of it are to serve the citizen's safety and welfare, to protect natural resources, and to, of course, have good fiscal and regulatory responsibility. We broke it down into different components of service, including operation and maintenance, and then what we called structural activities, which is really the rehab or replacement of drainage infrastructure. And then we also broke it down into two different phases of what we're calling the level of service, basically looking at where we are to, how's the county's drainage program working today? Where can we realistically hope to move to in the shorter term, as in the next five years? And then the desired level of service would be, you know, further out, five to 10-year range. So really moving, you know, looking what it would take to move the county from a reactive approach to drainage needs to more proactive and then more long-term asset management-focused. The county's extent of service policy was really already sort of established, but the, the plan really documents it. Basically, the county assumes ownership and operation and maintenance responsibilities for all drainage inlets, junction boxes, drainage pipes, ditches within the county-owned road right of way. And that is excluding driveway culverts, because those are considered to be privately owned and maintained. Currently, the county owns about 121 miles of roads, 99 of which are paved, 21 gravel, one mile of dirt road, and of those, about 90 miles are in Savannah Lakes Village. So one of the first things we did as part of the study was conduct a storm drainage inventory. And so this, I don't know if you saw our surveyor out, out in the field for, he was out there for a couple of months, basically going out and locating all of the visible drainage infrastructure within the county, county-owned road right of ways. One thing to note is we didn't, you know, the county does not own or maintain drainage infrastructure off the right of way, so if there's ditches or pipes that go, you know, behind lots or side, side yards and stuff like that, it was not part of our, our scope since the county doesn't own those. But we collected information on the location of the structures or drainage assets, the type of them, the type of structure or type of pipe, material, pipe sizes, measurements to the, basically to the depth of, of the pipes, if they're, if it's built into a structure, condition assessments, and then observations about sediment buildup, trash accumulation, et cetera, basically to get a broad picture of what all's out there. And so what we, what came of that is we were able to conclude that the county owns approximately 28,282 feet of storm drain pipes, and of that, there are about 504 individual culverts and pipes. And of course, there may be a couple of random things out there that we, you know, were buried or we couldn't see, but this should be, should be fairly close. And we've also got a chart here that gives you a breakdown of the pipe materials. One thing to note here is that about 77% of your drainage pipes are what you call CMP or corrugated metal pipe, which is a drainage pipe material that is kind of known for not having the longest of lifespans. So we'll talk about that in a little bit, but that is a notable quality of, of your And so out of that information, we were able to put together what we called two different plans. First was a maintenance plan, and this was primarily intended to be a list of drainage feature, drainage assets that we thought needed maintenance, mainly due to being full of sediment or debris. You can see a, a chart here that shows the breakdown of the different maintenance issues. And as you can see, most of them are tied to excess sediment or removed debris. There are a couple of random, random things in there as well. And then in the bottom right, you can see a photo of a good example of a culvert pipe that is obviously filled with sediment and debris. So a lot, that was a very common thing we observed out there. So a lot of these things were recommended to be, to be maintained. The second part of the, the second plan that we put together is what we call a capital improvement plan. And again, both of these plans are, it's basically a list of projects or a list of pipes or drainage assets that we think need attention, and then maps that go along with that, attached to their condition assessments and, and other information that we collected. So the capital improvement plan is divided into four different priority categories, but it's basically a list of pipes or structures that we think need to be replaced in the next, within the next five to 10 years. So initially, you know, the first priority of replacement pipes is really tied to pipes like the one you see there where it's partially crushed or we think there's some issue with its condition that would lead it need, to need to be replaced in the near term. And then the other component of this is the, the fact that a lot of, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of your pipes are corrugated metal pipes, which are known to have a fairly limited lifespan. So we did discuss this a bit, but eventually recommended that it would be smart to plan to replace all of those corrugated metal pipes roughly within the next 10 years or so. Now, that might not necessarily be required, but as far as a planning level decision, it, it seems to be the prudent way to go. We also included planning level cost estimates for these replacement projects. So, you know, of course, when you get into engineering and, and construction costs, things are going to vary a little bit, but we used the best available data we had for that. And here's a little, some more, some more data for you, but it, basically a description of the four different priority categories that we included in there, urgent, high, medium, and low. And then we have a breakdown of the number of pipes that fall within each of those priority categories and estimated costs if you were to replace all those pipes today or in 2025 and then in 2030 or in 2035, basically projecting out some degree of inflation. So as you can see, if, if you were to replace everything in, in this year, you'd be looking at almost $3 million worth of, of work. If you look down to 2035, you'd be looking closer to $4 million or roughly 3.7. There's obviously different ways you can choose to fund this and prioritize how you want to do it. Some, some facts that we thought were notable. The total replacement cost of county-owned drainage infrastructure is about 3.8 million in today's dollars. And note that we did not recommend replacement of all your infrastructure. There was a number of pipes that were in decent condition or made out of, for example, concrete pipe. So that's not going to line up with the estimates on the previous page. If the county were to address all your projects by 2035, we estimate it would require an annual funding of approximately $330,000. If the county were to address only the urgent, high, and medium priority projects by 2035, we estimate it would require an annual funding amount of about $127,000. So the big difference there is cutting out the low priority projects. And the final part of the capital improvement plan that I think is, is where the, sort of the rubber meets the road, if you will, is, is the, the funding plan. So we looked at a variety of different funding options to basically generate some, some revenue to, to, to fund these projects. One notable thing here is that a lot of stormwater programs across the southeast use what's called a stormwater utility fee to fund their, their programs. We were able to find a survey performed by SESWA, which is the Southeastern Stormwater Association, of 97 different programs across the southeast U.S. Of those, about 52% of them used stormwater utility fees solely to fund their capital improvement budgets. And then other, where I guess non-utility fee funds were used to supplement those funding, you can see the breakdown here, but 40% of the projects were funded through grants, 14% through loans, and so on. So by far, I think the most common funding source for these projects was a utility fee, but obviously, you can, can find funding elsewhere as in addition to that. And we're just doing a little bit of research on, you know, if you were to implement a stormwater utility fee, what would that look like? So we've kind of analyzed a couple of different options here for you. Most stormwater programs that have a utility fee base it on what's called an ERU or equivalent residential unit. So basically, a, a single-family residence would be charged a flat monthly rate for a utility fee. And then for non-residential properties like commercial or industrial properties, typically that would be assessed on a area basis based on the amount of impervious area they have, so rooftops and parking lots and, and of course, billing is, is a, a challenge with this, especially if you're talking about something countywide. A lot of stormwater programs will add that fee on to a utility bill, like a water or sewer bill, or you, which could be monthly, or you could do it on an annual basis if you were to attach it to a property tax bill, for example. And then this chart here gives you some monthly rates, a utility fee rates from other counties across the state. You can see they range anywhere from over $8 a month to, you know, closer to $2 a month in, up in Greenville County. So that, you know, you can adjust, adjust those, those fees as, as needed to fit your program. And, and, and then this is just based, rough, some rough estimates. If the, if McCormick County were to assess a county-wide stormwater utility fee at different rates, you can see the annual revenue it would generate off to the right, so anywhere from about $150,000 a year at $2 per ERU or almost $600,000 at, at $8 per ERU. So you can, you know, obviously have a sliding scale there. And another thing we looked at was since Savannah Lakes Village neighborhood has a very dense concentration of county-owned roads and storm drainage infrastructure, we also looked at, you know, what would it look like if you just did an ERU in, in that area? And if you were to, to look at that, assuming the current roughly 1,400 completed homes, you know, here's the breakdown of what you could, what you could see as far as annual revenue related to utility fee rates. And then, let's see. We also looked at sort of a hybrid option between those two. If you did, say, a higher utility fee for Savannah Lakes Village and then a lower utility fee countywide, you could do, just hypothetically, if you did $2 per month countywide and $6 per month for Savannah Lakes Village, you could come up with about $217,000 in annual revenue. And then as, as Savannah Lakes Village is built out, your, the revenue would continue to go up in that area, obviously. Just, and again, we're not pushing any of these things, but these are just some hypotheticals to give you a sense of, you know, what, what sort of revenue you could generate if you were to pursue a stormwater utility fee. Some of the other funding sources we looked at were grants, and we've listed these out in detail in the report. Obviously, the Rural Infrastructure Authority, which funded this, this project, is a good source of funding for these. The South Carolina Office of Resilience also funds a lot of projects, especially for studies and implementation work. FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program is, is a, is a good source of funding as well. It's typically tied to major disasters, and so that, that can be subject to, subject to change, obviously. The state revolving fund, which is implemented through SEDS, is another good source of low-interest rate loans, if you want to go that route. And then the And then the SEDOTC program funding is, is a very good source of funding as well. A lot of those are tied to road, road improvement projects, but drainage, especially since your drainage infrastructure is all within road rights away, it can also be used to fund that as well. And there may be some options to pair a drainage improvement project with a road improvement project, especially if it's being funded by, by C funds. That's kind of a summary of the, the different funding options we looked at and are, that are documented in the study. And so, to kind of wrap everything up, you know, the county is responsible for operation and maintenance of drainage assets within 121 miles of county-owned right-of-way. Most of the drainage system is located in Savannah Lakes Village, but others are spread throughout the county. Many of the county's pipes and ditches are partially filled with sediment and need, or need maintenance. A significant portion of the county's drainage pipes are in poor condition or are constructed with corrugated metal pipes, and basically should be planned for replace, have a replacement planned for the next 10 years or so. And we've outlined a number of funding mechanisms to help pay for this. That's all I've got.
Mr. Lamb, thank you, thank you very much. We've waited quite some times for this, for this document. It's been a long time, much needed, along, we've just received recently also our road study. We have those numbers, and basically what this does is gives us a roadmap of, you know, Mr. Mears, our road and bridge director, just does things as calls come in. So, now strategically, we can come up with a plan to start addressing these issues. And I, a little note I just made, I know that we're calling a, a fall workshop, probably possibly up at Dela, I'm not sure exactly where the location will be. And this will be one of our main topics, how to incorporate not only the road study, but with the drainage study and come up with a plan. Because the public, we've had in the past many years, we've done a lot of studies, and there's probably some shells back there with studies sitting on them. But, uh, we've come to a point now in, in our growth and the things that we're having to face on a daily basis is a roadmap, a plan. And this is perfect for us to take these, these statistics, looking at, an old-time friend of mine, Mr. Mears, she's got a lot of work to do, all these stopped-up pipes, but that's what it's all about, so that we can approach it proactively and get a lot of this stuff done, to, you know, make our roads and our drainage system a lot safer. So, I, I appreciate it, all the work that your organization and engineering firm has put in to present this to us, any other council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Thomas and Hutton for a job well done. I, I'm sure that when we look at the details of the study, we're going to be impressed with the thoroughness with which you undertook this, this assignment. But I was, I was a little taken aback that citizen satisfaction was one of those factors that you thought was so important, particularly when, and I know you probably didn't have a hand in doing this, but the county made a deliberate decision, despite significant requests for, from stakeholders to make input to this process, that our requests were totally ignored, particularly at Savannah Lakes Village. Kirk Smith, the CEO, I represent a significant portion of the village. We made multiple requests for stakeholder input to this process, and they were all denied. Now, in terms of citizen satisfaction, well, based on the drainage problems that exist at Savannah Lakes Village, I'm not sure that this report is going to meet that objective. It's not the infrastructure that exists that is the problem in the main. It's the infrastructure that does not exist and that needs to be built. You've outlined some of the problems that we have out there, where the existing drainage ditches, a lot have been filled in. A lot of them are not draining very well, but we have other problems in which the drainage ditches work just fine, but the county's water coming off of those draining ditches is going on to private property. That is an issue that has not been addressed, in terms of the county's responsibility for putting the water in those, those public drainage, drainage ditches on private property. We have people who are moving because their properties are being flooded by the heavy rains that are coming off of the drainage ditches maintained by the county right onto their properties. The capital improvement plan that you have provided apparently does not include any new construction, but only maintenance of the existing construction. The taxing proposal that you have proposed, particularly for Savannah Lakes Village, would not resolve most of the most pressing drainage problems that exist there. We would be paying for a continuation and an improvement of services that's simply going to drain county water onto private property. It might even be counterproductive. And the last thing that I would like to note is that there was no assessment of desirable changes to county ordinances with respect to construction of new homes that would resolve the problem of a lot of drainage coming off of those new homes and on to existing properties. There's, there's simply no, no standards within the, the building department that are able to address that at the present time. Now, having, having said all of that, I'm not necessarily blaming you for what happened. I'm simply making a notation that a lot of the problems that SLV identified in particular, and that were identified in other parts of the county, were not considered in this study. And although I'm sure it's going to be an excellent study and is going to provide a lot of information, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yes, ma'am.
We'd like to thank the company for doing what they did. They did what we asked for. There were several issues, as Mr. Cook has mentioned, that are directly impacting properties out in Savannah Lakes Village because of the drainage issue. But I think that's going to be a separate, something that needs to be looked at in the future, how we deal with those things. I know part of some of the issues are with the building companies that are out there, they don't have any standards that they are required to set up in terms of drainage. There may have been some in the past when some of the first homes were built, but lately, I know there's not. But that is certainly something we'll need to address. But as far as this report is concerned and what was done, I think you guys have done an excellent job sending out what we sent out to do initially with this project, was what's county-owned that needs replacing. And I did not realize we were using so much corrugated metal. I think that must have been a price thing. Back when the county first got watering sewer and got county-wide water, a lot of the things that were put in place, there was a federal grant that we got that allowed us to do that. And a lot of those pipes are 40 years old, because that's when stuff was put in place. So, there's a way, we're going to have to look at how we can repair what's there, and at the same time, start to look at how we can help those homes, those places that are getting that runoff as a result of the county's drainage ditches dishing out towards their homes. So, I don't know what the answer to that is, but we acknowledge that that's an issue that we've got to work through. But as far as what the, Thomas and Hutton was asked to do with this study, they have done that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Tom Hutton. I'm not here to punish, because that the easy thing to be done. We can always, I can look at the proposal and say, you ain't did enough nowhere. But no, you have. You had did a super job, like been stated, you done what we, kind of asked you to do. And that you're a punter, but we wouldn't, we didn't prepare what we have today. If we had a plan for what we have today, we wouldn't have the problem we have today. So, now we got to work through that, because we can't go back now and change it. And so, but going forward, it gonna take time. It take money. It take money to change, to be able to correct some of these problems, because we don't have design to take care of all the work that it taking place now. But with the growth going, we putting houses that we said, we not put houses a few years ago, now we putting houses there, and that is causing problem. And so, but we got to work through that, and we, we will get there. There's a good start tonight, showing what we need to do. And we, again, thank you for the job.
If, if I may, I would like to add, I think, you know, in, in terms of improving your stormwater program as a whole, I think you can't really go from, you know, where you are today to a really advanced program overnight. It takes time and money and resources and staff and expertise. And I think, you know, obviously, there's a lot of things you, you all can identify that you'd like to address. I think as far as, you know, the most immediate priorities and the lowest hanging fruit, I think a lot of the things that are identified in this study are, you know, your, your, your first priorities, and then as you work through those things, you can continue to evolve and, and address these other needs as well. Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Safe travels home, sir. Mr. Rebs, Three Rivers.
Good evening. My name is Scott Rebus. I'm the general manager of Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority. I became the general manager in 2020 when Tim Fox retired. Some of you probably know Tim Fox. And I was director of operations for about five years before that. So, I've been around about 10 years. I have Mike Terry, he's our director of finance, and Brent Robinson is our bond attorney. He's been working with us for, for more than 10 years. So, we're here tonight to talk about Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority. And some of you may know, or may not know, but the authority was formed in 1992, when the landfill regulations changed, and all the counties had to close their existing landfills, the garbage dump, and, and build a lined landfill. So, nine of the counties got together, along with DOE, and decided to build the line regional landfill on the Savannah River site. So, the landfill permit is for about 280 acres. So far, we have 90 acres built, that's seven different cells. And then that 90 acres will fill up and be complete in 2028. So, we're here to talk about the future beyond that, building the next cell, which would be cell eight. And basically, we're here to ask if McCormick County wants to continue to be involved with Three Rivers. Your current service agreement commits you until 2033. We're asking you to sign a new service agreement, which would commit you to Three Rivers until 2050. Now, we have permitted space for more than 100 years, but we're asking to 2050. So, the, I want to go ahead, yeah. So, what are your options? In the state of South Carolina, there are seven landfills that are big enough and currently permitted to handle the garbage for next 25 years. So, Aiken County, number seven, that's us, Three Rivers. There's Greenville County in the upstate, and Spartanburg County, Spartanburg, which is run by Republic Services, it's private landfill. And then, of course, in Columbia, there's Richland County landfill, which is run by waste management. So, those, Republic Services and Waste Management, of course, are private companies. So, that just shows the amount of cubic yards that we have remaining on our permit. We have about 37 million, you probably can't see that, but we have about 37 million cubic yards remaining. Greenville County has about the same, Ori County is about 12 million, and then there's four private landfills that have space to handle the next 25 years. So, we have looked at the next cell to be built. So, the bottom of the screen there are the current cells, one through seven. That's what exists now. On the top part of the screen, the dark area will be cell number eight. That would be the next cell to build. It's approximately 28.2 acres. It will last for approximately 13 years at the current tonnes that we receive. And the estimate to build that is $22 million. And it would be set up for 15-year financing. And the cell will last, like I said, approximately 13 years. So, I'm going to turn it over to Brent to talk about the money side of this.
Good evening, and just a quick clarification, I think Scott was thinking of Ray Jones, who's the bond attorney for Three Rivers. I am, I am an attorney, but I'm also an investment banker. The firm I'm with is Stiefel, and so, we've worked with Three Rivers and lots of counties and cities throughout South Carolina, Three Rivers specifically for more than a decade, on all of their financing. So, in the case of the, of the new cell, our job on it would be to identify investors that would buy the bonds, or that we would place the bonds with, assuming bonds are issued to finance it. So, moving on to the discussion of the financing. So, there are a lot of factors that investors and rating agencies, when bonds are sold, and that's like getting a credit rating from Equifax or, or Experian. The rating agencies are Moody's and S&amp;P, primarily when bonds are sold. But one of the, there, there's lots of credit criteria that go into the financing of a publicly-owned asset such as this. There's going to be demographic considerations, the economy of all nine counties that are the customer base, the financial strength of the utility is, is one of the primary factors. And within the financial considerations, among the biggest considerations for the rating agencies, and also by extension, the investors, is what's called the debt service coverage ratio, or DSC. So, very simply, the debt service coverage ratio is the ratio of what your net revenues are in any given year relative to your principal and interest payments on the bonds that are due in that given year. And you can see the formula there, again, is very simple, total revenues, less your operating expenses, divided by total annual debt service. One of the most critical aspects when it comes to figuring out how to sell bonds, and we are talking about selling bonds that are from, from a revenue-generating asset such as a landfill, is what this debt service coverage ratio is. It can't just be one-to-one. You can't have $1 for every dollar of debt service that you have. The reason being, and we'll see this when we come to the finances of the, of the Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority, business cycles change. Pandemics can occur. Investors will not put their capital at risk if you're operating on a very thin margin. If you're only bringing in a dollar for every dollar worth of debt that you've got, that's not going to be enough credit strength from an investor's point of view. And we'll get into a little more detail on that. So, why is, why is the DSC, or debt service coverage, important? Three main reasons. Creditworthiness is among the, the primary. Healthy DSC is the demonstration that the borrower is financially stable and has a low risk of default. The bond rating, we've talked about that. Right now, Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority has an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's, which is a very good investment-grade rating. 40% of Standard and Poor's consideration of the financial component of the rating is the DSC, the debt service coverage. It's big. And then moving on, investor confidence. Having a great rating, having a good facility that's operating well under a strong management, that's great. The debt service coverage, what that message is to investors, is that their capital is going to be safe. And so, it's not just about getting the lowest cost of funds from those investors, it's about getting those investors to come to the table to begin with. That's what I mean by investor confidence. So, given its importance, and, and we heard about a CIP when it came to stormwater needs throughout the county. The CIP for Three Rivers is cell eight. You know, that's the capital improvement plan. It's, so the DSC, debt service coverage, is a critical consideration when you're building that. So the DSC, debt service coverage, is a critical consideration when you're building that plan of finance. So let's briefly look at what the historic coverage levels have been, DSC for Three Rivers. So what I've done is I've taken the last five years of audit financials that are available, that's fiscal '20 through '2024. And you can see that I've run out the DSC coverage, starting off with calculating the net revenues. So total revenues, total expenses, when each given year, coming up with the net revenues, dividing that by the total debt service that was due in each one of those years. In fiscal 2020, and you can see on the debt service line, it was about $3.7 million worth of debt service. And then it dropped down substantially the following year. Because the net revenues stay pretty close year over year, you can see there's an impact in there from COVID in fiscal '21. But because the net revenues stay pretty close in there, the coverage going from a 173 in fiscal 2020 to a 3.04 in 2021, that's not because more revenues came in, it's because the debt service went down. And by the same extension, when you look at fiscal '24, the debt service dropped year over year from 2.7 million in 2023 down to 1.2 million. That's how you get five times coverage. So when looking back at the average coverage for Three Rivers over this five-year period, I threw out the high and the low and came up with an average of about 2.49 times. That's a good coverage ratio. It's not heavy-handed, it's a good coverage ratio. It's what investors would expect to see with a landfill credit. So how does the debt service coverage fit into what the debt profile is, the existing debt of Three Rivers? This chart shows that. The bars are the actual debt service payments that are owed by Three Rivers in each year. The colors indicate different series of bonds that are outstanding, different loans that were taken out over time for different projects. So as you can see, we've got a handful of bonds that are outstanding that pay out in 2033, which is the end of your contract, your existing contract with Three Rivers. That orange line that goes straight across is what's called your rate covenant. The rate covenant is a legally mandated debt service coverage level minimum that you have to maintain. It's a 125, so that's a legal requirement. The green line is the debt service coverage that we looked on the prior page at, at least with respect to 2024. So again, on the prior page, fiscal 2024, five times coverage, going back to the chart. That's why that line is so high up there. It's five times coverage in 2024. In 2025, and for the next several years, it drops down, not because of net, and by the way, this is unprojected net revenues. It drops down not because projected net revenues are anticipated to drop, but you can see the debt jumps up from 2024 into 2025 and out several years. It goes up pretty significantly. So our coverage stabilizes for about the next five to six years at two times. And then, when those gray bars, one of the series of bonds pays off in the last handful of years, fiscal '31 through '33, goes to about a 3.34. So status quo, no new debt coming on. For the next five years, we're going to ride a little bit below what our historic average has been. We've been around two and a half times, looks like we're going to be about two times. And then it'll jump up when you see some debt that pays off in the future. Again, that's status quo, that's what we've already got. Okay. But what Scott was talking about was that we've got a project that could cost $22 million. That's a projected cost. The total borrowing is greater than that. And the reasons are twofold. One, there are certain reserves that will need to be set up on the transaction. That's called the Debt Service Reserve Fund, a year's worth of debt service. And then there's issuance costs that are associated with it. That's the cost to actually take it to market and get the investors to the table. The total bond offering is closer to $27 million. I'm just going to round up here and say $27 million. All right, how is that $27 million structured? I'm going to go back two slides here. Look at our debt structure that we've got here. We're in fiscal '25, actually, we finished fiscal '25, we're in fiscal '26. Where those gray bars are, that's our current debt structure at the top level. It's going to drop off after a few years. So what we did with our debts, and then it drops off again with the blue bars a few years after that. So what we've done in terms of structuring the new deal is we're wrapping the proposed new bonds around the existing debt. And the reason why we're doing that, this deferred principal structure, this is the second bullet, we're trying to work in concert or in combination with the existing debt of the authority to lower the overall impact on all customers, including McCormick County. And by the way, I have to say this, the cost of funds I put here is just an estimate. It's subject to market fluctuations, but that's probably a pretty conservative rate for an A-plus credit. Okay. So if we borrow and we don't do anything with the tipping fees, the cost of using the landfill stays exactly where it is. This is what our chart looks like. So what you can see is it's the chart from a couple of pages back, but now I've layered in these blue lines. So that's 15 years' worth of debt. It represents two years' worth of construction, and then, as Scott said, 13 years' worth of use on the landfill. So it's 15 years' worth of debt total. If we don't do anything with the tipping fees, for the first, you can see we've got fiscal '25 and '26, we're still at two times coverage. As I said a moment ago, fiscal '25 is over. And when we're in the middle of fiscal '26, we haven't taken on that new debt. So we're okay. But if the bonds are issued next year and you start paying debt service on that, you can see what happens. Instead of having two times coverage going out, in fiscal '27, we drop to a 1.41. That is uncomfortably close to that orange line, the rate covenant. Investors won't like that. It would be very difficult to bring them to the table to invest in a new cell for Three Rivers. And even after we see the gray bars, that existing debt pay off, our coverage does go up, but it only goes up to a 1.60. That's materially below what our five-year average has been. This does not message a strong credit to investors. So what we've been talking about with the authority, and I believe they've actually adopted the tipping fee increases? The board? Yeah, the board approved the resolution. So what we talked about with the board is, starting in fiscal 2027, five consecutive years of tipping fee increases. $2.30 a ton in the first year, $2 per year for the next four years. So that's $10.30 per ton over a five-year period, feathering in the total increase over that five-year period. How does that look relative to what our current costs are, based on what Scott was saying was the peer group within South Carolina? Our current fee is $37.70. Adding on $10.30 brings us up to $48. I hope you can see those two footnotes there. The current fee of $37.70 is 33% lower than the state average. And after the $10.30 increase, where we go up to $48, we're still 15% below the state average. Those are today's state averages. In five years, when we actually get up to $48, my guess would be that the averages throughout the state are not going to stay where they are. They're probably going to go up and will be an even better bargain at that point. But conservatively, just assume that there's no increases in the cost throughout the state, we're still 15% below the average. So what does that look like from an investor's perspective? So assuming the tipping fee increases were going to place, let me go back two slides here. So you can see the green line there where it overlaps with the gray bars there. It's that flat line running at about a 1.41 coverage. And here, instead, you can see over that same period of time, the green line ramps up gradually over time. The debt structure is still exactly the same, 15 years' worth of debt. But what happens with the coverages is, instead of being at around a 1.49 in fiscal 2027, we start off at a 1.58, and then we grow over time. Ultimately, we end up back to about a two and a quarter, 2.27 times after all five tipping fee increases have been instituted. That's below our historic average, but I think still comfortably within the parameters of what an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's would mandate. And again, the issue here is not just maintaining the rating for the sake of getting the lowest cost of funds, these tipping fee increases and having them in place to automatically go into effect before we ever go borrow the money. It's the peace of mind that we'll actually bring the investors to the table to begin with. Because if we can't get the investors in when we're going to sell those bonds, that's going to be a problem. There either won't be a bond deal at all and a project to fund, or funds for the project. Or to attract the investors to the table at that point, that 5% cost of funds I was talking about, you could go over that. And then it becomes cost prohibitive. We're trying to balance the interest here of cost effectiveness, not only for the customer base, but also what the investing community is going to expect to see. And that actually wraps up the portion of the presentation I'm going to. Yeah, so, okay, that's a good point, too. So Scott mentioned this before, let's go back to the original slide. Okay, there's our existing debt. So for the key listeners out there, Scott said a little back that our existing landfill cell is going to play out in 2028. Our debt here goes out to 2033. We have an asset that reaches the end of its useful life before our debt's paid off. That's a problem. But the structure that we've come up with, the new cell takes two years to build as a 13-year useful life. That's 15 years, that's what this financing is. So what the plan of finance does, and this is not just about good government, this is not just about being prudent with public dollars. This is about putting together a good credit. Investors don't want to see an asset that's going to play out before they're paid off. That's what they care about, being paid on time, in full, every time, all the way out to year 15. That's what this plan of finance is structured to do. The other thing is, to think about this debt service coverage. If we have an excess of revenues over debt service, which we do, that's the coverage component, the goal would be, assuming that costs can be managed over time, socking that money away, socking some of it away at least, if not a good bit of it, to either pay the debt off early, or by the time we come around to the 15-year mark, and we're talking about doing the next cell, how about cash funding that thing instead of borrowing again? Or at least cash funding a part of it? So there's a plan of finance here that's building in not just for the current environment. And folks, even if we weren't talking about having to do another landfill cell after this one, assuming you all wanted to stay on as a customer, this is the plan of finance we need to get the investors to the table right now to build the one that is in need. But with that excess money over the next 15 years, if managed appropriately, I mean, the goal certainly would be, let's minimize the borrowing the next time around with an eye towards maybe even eliminating it entirely. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a question of mine, you mentioned about averaging the tipping fee going up $10 over a five-year period. How does that, you mentioned the private landfills in several of the other counties. What will they be doing? What are they seeing in far as rate increases on tipping fees?
Well, I can just tell you some of the averages now. I think Fairfield County, Clay was telling us it was $63 a ton they're paying, Fairfield. Charleston County is around $100 a ton now. A lot of the counties, Buford, the counties on the southern coast of South Carolina, that landfill is going to close in about five years. So they may be looking to transfer some waste to us. So that, we have the ability to potentially add some other counties. But the tonnage cost in general is much higher than we pay. So most of the counties you talked to. There was an article about Charleston, West Virginia, and they closed their landfill where it ran out. They were paying $53 a ton. Landfill closed on June 30th, and on July 1st, their tipping fee went to $93 a ton, 93. So you can imagine a $40 increase in your tonnage. That's a significant amount of money. So landfills, nobody wants a landfill. And landfill space is getting less and less and less. So we have a good situation where you have set up plenty of permitted space for the future, and you can control your cost. If you go to Republic, they answer to the stockholders. They don't answer to the citizens of McCormick County. But we have a nine-member Board of Directors, Charles is on our board, and you have a say in how we operate. That's definitely a plus on staying on the county side and not going to the private.
And to answer that question, just to help the public understand exactly what's happening here, we are a part of tri-county waste, solid waste management. Three counties have partnered together to collect, that's what our recycling centers do. They collect the waste that we generate. Then it goes to a transfer station, and then they send it to Three Rivers. And that's where the tipping fee comes in and affects what we pay, the counties have to pay to make, you know, to cover that cost of handling our waste. Because all the waste we generate goes to Edgefield and then all the way to south of Vacant. So it takes a long journey, and that's why I was asking. When you mentioned tipping fees, as I do sit on tri-county's waste board, and we watch the tipping fee all the time because that ultimately affects, you know, our customers and our people that use our services. So just wanted them to understand that. Any other council questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure how the tri-county agreement that we have impacts our costs, but, or how the tipping fees between the three counties that are participating in that, how they, how those are figured based on the amount of tonnage that we are putting into tri-county. But there are three things that bother me a little bit with respect to this. And I'm not sure there's anything to be done about it. I'm just saying it makes me a little uncomfortable. The first thing is that the asset for which we are borrowing to make improvements is not worth a whole lot. I mean, it is a landfill. It's not something that can be sold to recoup an investment that has been made. I don't know what we would do if the process failed and we had to fall back on our existing assets in terms of our loan. Now, having said that, and having read the proposed agreement, I realize that there is a requirement in there that we have to continue to pay for whatever financial obligations we make under this agreement, regardless of whether or not Three Rivers is still in business. I mean, you could, you're not required to provide any service at all, and we still have to pay.
Well, there's a minimum tonnage.
I understand, but.
I don't know, Mike, do you know, answer, if we close the landfill, we, I don't.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying that the agreement as written says we have to continue to pay even if you don't provide any service. Or we have to go to court and get rid of mandamus in order to force the issue in some particular way. And Mr. Callison can verify that rits of mandamus are not always sure.
Nothing in the law is sure.
That is, that is, that is correct.
There's rules and there's exceptions.
Yes, yes.
Well, now, we have the draft service agreement.
Right.
And so changes could be made with our, with Ray has been our attorney working with you, I guess.
Right, and I've worked with Ray Jones with Parkipoe before. And this is first reading tonight we're having on the ordinance, so I'll certainly be looking over, and I know you will too. So I'm going to be looking over very detailed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I know you all, I have visited the facility, it is absolutely fantastic. I'm sure that whatever we do in the future is going to continue the kind of services that we are providing. I, the only thing that I would suggest is that I would hope at some point in time we would be able to sell the methane gas that is coming off.
We are selling, and we have a contract.
I mean, the last time that I was there, we were burning it off. And so I'm glad to hear that we're selling it.
Yeah, we have a 20-year contract with the company that came in and built a $50 million facility to clean the gas to basically the same grade as natural gas. facility to clean the gas to basically the same grade as natural gas so it can be put in a pipeline. It's currently being sold to Kimberly-Clark, but it is tied into Dominion Pipeline.
Very good.
So we are selling as of June. It took a while for them to build a plan.
I'm sure it did. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir. In looking at this agreement, as a county, we do not want to get into the business of having to dispose of waste. The nine counties that originally came together to do this whole deal decided that individually as well. So I think as far as for what we're currently doing with waste, I don't know who else would take it and who would do something with it if we weren't utilizing disagreement. I, you know, I don't have a problem with any of the things. One of the things I was looking at when you were talking about, we're 15 years and it'll be a 13-year life cycle. During that 13 years, I would assume we would be looking at some other type of way to look at sale number nine eventually because we have enough space down there to do another sale if needed, correct? And that's part of this process. You start off doing something to do as many years as you can, and then in thinking about down the road, I don't know how many of us will still be here after 2050. I mean, I hope I live as long as some of my land relatives did. I had one uncle that lived to be 110, and he was in great shape, but I wouldn't be in great shape if I lived to be 110 because I'm not in great shape now. But as far as planning, I think that's something we need to take into consideration as well, that there are long-range plans that this facility has in place to put us where we need to be in the future and that this is the first part of something that will get us the next 15 years where we need to be. And thank you guys for bringing this forward to us. And as Ms. Cook says, we do need to look through the document more clearly and be sure that we understand our obligations moving forward if something unforeseeable should happen.
Anyone else?
This is Mrs. Chairman. This was no easy task back in 1992, but we have saved the taxpayer economically by these nine counties coming together and persuading with DOE. I don't know what would have happened if we hadn't worked this out because this county can't afford a landfill. Some counties thought they could afford a landfill, and today they are paying severe for it, and some of the landfills are being closed today. And like you say, you closed the landfill in June and had to open back in July, the price almost doubled tonnage. And so why the tonnage is as low for these nine, for Three Rivers, is because of these nine counties being able to maintain the cost, keeping it as low and way below average, burying your garbage. D Head is not a friend of no one. And so I agree, I wish we could get around, but D Head, and when we talk about quality of life, that nowadays everything we use is garbage, and that D Head going to make sure we take care one way or the other. You're going to pay on the front end or the back end. D Head will shut you down, and you still going to have to ask a plea to bury your garbage because no one wanted in their backyard.
Thank you, Mr. D.
So this is a good presentation. I don't like the cost no more than one estimate, but we just can't get around the cost.
Mr. Rebus, we do have a decision item later in our agenda, which is title only, and I think we've well discussed in the presentation. It's been excellent. I know you folks are from outer town. I have no problem if you would like to leave, but you're more than welcome to stay, but I know probably from Aiken and Columbia, I don't know where everyone's coming from, but I'm just allowing y'all to exit if you want to. Now, when Mr. Jennings was the chairman, you would always have to pledge to buy some food in McCormick before you left, so I want to carry on his legacy. So make sure you spend some money in our town because we got to pay for a lot of trash. Thank you, thank you very much. At this time, let's see, we have our speaker, Ms. Heather McNally from About the MAC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You certainly have a lot of robust work ahead, a lot of really good projects that you're always having to work through. We're just trying to present a project that we hope you can consider that we've almost taken off your plate as much as we can. So this is just a brief presentation tonight about the benefits of our public and private partnership. So I'll just dive right on in. For anybody in the audience, we do have some printed versions. We know that's a preferred method for some, but you'll see on the screen as we proceed. So thank you again. Good evening, Chairman Hamby and County Council, Administration, and our public. In an effort to be able to provide full transparency regarding the MAC building project, we found ourselves at an ideal time to be able to communicate directly as to where we are at. We want to thank you for your continued support. Without it, we couldn't be where we are at to date. And so while the print may be a little small up top, what I'm really trying to show you is that we've been working on this for years, and officially the MAC took over the building in 1984. So for those of you that remember those days, we thank you for your support especially, and I'll dive right on in. In your packet tonight, you'll see a full project stakeholder summary. I won't spend tonight going through each page, so this will act as a summary for the public to be aware. All project descriptions, including our history of the building and goals, including our next steps, are all summarized on page one. The next few pages will also include project milestones over the next, dawning from 1984 all the way up through the pandemic. So it just tracks and logs in all of the efforts we've made both before the capital sales tax of 2016 and to date. It's really important to note that our project began after the facility was closed for two long years due to the executive order on March 13, 2020. So we sat vacant for over two years during that pandemic. We were unable at that time upon all reassessments to ensure any quality, health, safety, and accessibility in our building. So that became a critical time for us, let alone surviving, operating on a 50% annual loss of all of our income, revenue, operations, and limited programs. 60% of small nonprofits across this nation did not make it through that period. We are very proud to be here and serving still today. We were able to secure a catalyst gift in October of 2022. The years are beginning to blur, so I need to double check my years there. This catalyst gift helped us proceed and extend the investment from the 2016 schematic plans that we had done, which addressed all plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and structural needs of our historic hotel couture. The building that we operate from was built in 1910, and I'll show you some historic images a little bit later just to put this in context. We have now been able to extend our original contract to address some critical fire protection systems, provide additional HVAC systems, and including work even through this past summer, critical repairs to floors, replastering, painting, and other such repairs internally. So we have been working on this extensively since the moment we could secure an initial contract. At this same time last year, we actually entered into a historic tax credit agreement and secured federal and state historic tax credit investors. This act helped to provide equity that we'll be able to use for the future remaining project needs. This was a first for McCormick County. So we've gone through a whole lot of milestones, as you can see. There was a long period of waiting approvals for our state sprinkler system. That was an unexpected delay, but for the most part, aside from some critical flooring issues, we've been able to stay on our project budget based on our cost estimate and address those critical flooring issues through extending MAC funds and then also replenishing from now incoming state tax credit equity. So we are down to page five, if that helps. Perfect. We are now very proud to announce, and some may have already heard this, but we have officially completed our extended Phase One contracts, and we were able to receive our required Part Three certification of completion from our National Park Services. We actually have to get approved from the Department of Interior, which are our federal partners, for all historic preservation efforts. We also have a covenant with our state shipo, the South Carolina Heritage and Preservation Office. So these elements are required. We only just received that certification just last month. So if that helps to put some time perspectives into why the building project has extended, it is, one, as we've had more funds, we've done more good work, and then also the requirement and certification process is operating at the federal, state, and local levels. The great news is, however, we just received our first substantial disbursements coming in through our state, federal historic tax credits just last month. So we now are finally beginning to see what's called the tranche of those funds. One was approximately $150,000. That actually brought in about $12,000 more than what was originally projected, and we also saw another tranche for about $232,000 representing nearly $22,000 in additional tax credits. All of those numbers are based on the fact that we had a cost certification complete, and that secured the fact that we had over $1.5 million in all of Phase One that was credited as what's called qualified rehabilitation expenses, or QRE. So we extended and grew above and beyond our budget, and now we're putting those funds forward to help address the needs. The great news is, this action and securing the tax credits has allowed us to remain mobilized with our publicly bid contractor. So again, back to our requirements, we did need to bid publicly. We did so. We had eight bids for a general contractor, and of course, we proceeded with our most competitive bid. We're very happy with all of the scope and services that our general contractor has provided. We hit a critical window this summer where if we did not mobilize, we were going to have to go back into another series of publicly bidding and also instead of mobilizing the contract, and that obviously always costs more and is more time-consuming. So we were able to negotiate a bridge loan agreement to leverage our known equity, and that's what's critical. We are only leveraging and extending year-to-year based on our known tax credit equity, and the only one we have firmly confirmed through the cost certification process is the QRE for 2024, which actually went back, we could claw back all the way to the dawn of the beginning of that Phase One contract, which means that we were able to secure funds based on even our 2021 investments into this project all the way through the end of December 31st of 2024. So that meant that we were able to extend and find two lenders to help us extend our contracts and services and secure our critical Phase Two contract because we have, our obligations are to advance as much QRE as we can in every calendar year. It's a part of the historic tax credit process. So what that allowed us to do is to enter into contract with our general construction team for a contract for about $650,000. And those items are making sure that we are tackling under Phase Two contract our basement storage for occupancy needs, the commercial kitchen, the front porch and balustrade, which is half of our front porch scope that we're excited to bring back. We've had a lot of historic preservation, you know, those that have known the MAC for a long time have known that that's actually a really big piece for us to rebuild our historic identity and be that historic destination site downtown. It's also within the scope of what we could afford and what we can accomplish between now and December of 2025. With that, we'll go back through the whole process again for cost certification, verifying and validating our QRE, and then syndicating our tax credits, again, securing further equity to continue to move us forward. The reason why I wanted to present publicly today is, one of my last presentations in the public eye was during the capital sales tax commission window. And what I want to secure to the public and to council is that all of the scope of work that is under contract was presented publicly. It was a part of our entire application process for the referendum that did pass that November 5th of 2024. So we are continuing to move forward with that process. This is our way to be those project supervisors, to ensure that we are seeking additional sources to continue to efficiently and effectively deliver the projects as the public expects and voted accordingly towards in that referendum. So the reason why I'm also here today is we're excited. Upon completion of all of this work, we will actually be 80% of the way through our visionary budget. I can assure you, four years ago, the MAC would never have been able to see that this had a path forward. And between historic tax credits, our federal and state tax investors, and then also abandoned building tax credits, which was extended by South Carolina legislation, please thank them for all of us, that increased our potential maximum cap, and we are getting closer to that amount to be able to seek the maximum amount of credits back into our project. All of this is further reducing any burden to council, to our public and our community. We actually took an act to suspend any local solicitation of funds and private dollars because with such a generous catalyst gift, we felt like we were already securing opportunities to move forward. It takes a lot of management to get through the legal and tax compliances here, so this became our key priority. By December, we will be through, and of course, that's always, you know, give us a few months. There's always a few months for punchless items and beautification. QRE does limit things that are such as like soft costs, which would include our desks and putting personnel back in. We're not at a point where we are announcing a public date as of yet. We're very excited to do so. But I did want to go ahead and just announce and make it a formal presentation to the public and council that in regards to the capital sales tax projects, we believe we are meeting every requirement. We did sign off on the funding document of requirements, and this is our path forward. So we are prepared to, we are responsible for coordinating the timing and readiness of all of these fund sources. Looking ahead, we will be ready for our Phase Three, which is our final chapter. This will focus on the two remaining ad alternates, and that's good right there. Thank you so much. So if you can see out of the back, this is the current scope and work right here. This is the proposed basement storage. Crystal, if you can go down just a little bit more. Kitchen will also be handled, if you can go to page nine. That scope of work right there, I just wanted to acknowledge, our front porch actually has two parts to it. Part A will be addressing what is to our property line, but we have a second phase, and if you can go down just a little bit more, that's the hotel couture that we are currently remodeling. That's from 1910. So the balustrade will be reestablished for historic preservation, which McCormick County, for tourism purposes, will be really excited to be able to share this great historic tale. But we will be replacing that. It's a non-occupiable space, so for anyone that may have expectations that we can have a cup of tea out in the front porch, we're not allowed, but this does serve all of the state requirements through our Historic Preservation Office. If you can go down to the final, this one right here. So Phase Three, which is what we're preparing for now, while we're focusing on Phase Two contracted work, this elevator is not just a passenger elevator. It's actually a four-story stairwell to provide life safety requirements and egress. And so what will happen is, what is really unique to this project and program, it will transform the amount of qualified space that is available and open up occupancy on our fourth floor. So the final two chapters to the MAC project, once we do the accessibility in the front entrance, will be the elevator, and if you can go down to the second half, please. And this is a very, I always tease because it's a very dry image of what a youth center and young adult studio will look like. Please imagine that to be a vibrant... Please imagine that to be a vibrant space for creative actions and use for our children and our young adults, that we can further invest in our younger generation. And if you'll go down to the last page, on page 11, this is the starting point. If you didn't know, there was an original Hotel Cature that was actually built, we believe as early as the mid-1850s. Of course, with small towns, there were lots of fires, so it's hard to keep up with the different fires. At the bottom left, this is a favorite image to remind us as to why investment in these avenues is so critically important. Just in 1984, that was the Hotel Cature before the MAC took responsibility and partnership in agreement with town and county. So we've come from 1984 to 2016, and then and beyond. And installing that elevator will ensure that we have full ADA level, federal level, accessibility for all four floors, to ensure that we can deliver our mission, our vision, arts for all. And that includes all generations, all backgrounds, all mobility impairment. This, this needs to be a site that can be well-used and celebrated and reinvigorate our downtown. And the one program we are not serving at this time is our great arts exhibitions. We all look forward to getting back to those, myself included. But we did want to put this in the public eye. We're prepared to share all budgets, invoices, and documentation that is required and necessary. We believe we're meeting the requirements for future funding disbursement. We do understand that the timeline of the availability of funds is not yet known, and that we're comfortable with that. We just wanted to make sure we understand now, so that we can start to plan for what that Phase Three would look like, so we have some element to leverage that ordinance to hopefully continue to extend with our investors and continue to syndicate the tax credits. The only note is, at some point, just for consideration, we will deliberately keep our contract extended to the best of our ability for both time and mobilization, because at some point, there is a time limit also on the tax credits program, as well as an official place in service beyond the scope. Once we go back in, we would probably lose access to those matching funds. And so it's something that we are trying now to start to explore, see what the actual gap is, and determine how our best path forward. So we're just in a planning phase and wanted to make sure the public and everyone had a chance to see the progress of the project. You have any questions? I know it's been a long night, and there's been a lot more numbers before me.
I know.
But I'm happy to help answer or address any questions, comments, or concerns.
Ms. McNally, we do thank you for this update. It's definitely evident of the amount of planning and work and expenses, and you've been coming before us for quite some time, and it's starting to pay off when you look at the old pictures versus the new pictures. So what, how important it is to save these historic sites, what makes McCormick County such a unique little county in which to live. So thank you for your work. Counsel, any questions for Ms. McNally?
Mr. Chairman, I certainly think that we have come a very, very long way with this. I know that we still have some obstacles to overcome in order to finish it the way it needs to be finished, but I for one am very anxious to get back to the Friday Night Art Exhibits. It was something that I think we, we all enjoy, and I hope we can return to that. The only, the only question that I have is whether or not the rehabilitation of the MAC will occur before the completion of the construction of the Veterans Park.
You know, I can only speak on the project that I am overseeing at this time. And just as we've heard many times tonight, all it takes is time and money.
Well, the only thing that I would, the only thing that I would suggest is if we're in a money raising, you can take odds on, on that and put some money down.
That's not a bad, not a bad idea. We will circle back on closing the gap with the public and other grants. We just need security on understanding the exact dollar of gap, so we can mobilize, and 2026 would be our goal. And it's a six-to-nine-month project from the time of start, so it would be wonderful if we could deliver it in next year. And 50% of that scope will actually not require, it can be done after, it's just framing, because it's a new build. With historic preservation, you have to have a new build for that. So there are some opportunities for us to be able to explore and see what that may look like. We will pick up on grants and probably some local public funding options, and I'll take you up on your idea. To wager, I think there's a Scrabble game, to use the term mendicant, might produce some funding as well, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Public comment, period. Ms. Barnes, anyone sign up?
Yes, sir. Diane Schaefer.
Ms. Schaefer?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to first say, the streaming that's done for tonight, council meeting, has been wonderful. I know we had some glitches last year when I couldn't make a meeting, and I turned it on the TV, and I turned on YouTube, and it would cut off, but it's been, it's been great. And the sound is even better, the mics have been closer, so I just appreciate that, to keep in touch with what's going on in your meetings. My other comment is about the people's panel from last night. There was a, and I appreciate Mr. Hamby representing the council there last night. There were many, well, the local legislation was in attendance, our senator, our state senator, and House of Representatives, and our local probate judge, John Gray. And there were many questions asked and answered, and they were, it was very informative, and I appreciate the responses. Of course, the issue of the water and sewer came up, and we're all aware of that, and it, it is tremendously important. I think about, I buy bottled water now, just to be on the safe side. I've been doing that for the last year because of the issues that we've had. And for 30-some years, I drank the water, no problem, but now I'm concerned. So I hope that we can get on the right track as far as fixing this, no matter what the cost. I know we don't have the money. We've never had the money. You know, we're poor, we're a poor county, that's all, you know, that's all we've heard for a number of years. We don't have the money. Well, we have to find it. We have to solve this. We have to make a plan and stick to it. And the last thing, the drainage issue that came up tonight, it was the first time I was aware of the study, and I just wanted to say that I don't live in Savannah Lakes Village, but I've had the same problem on my property that a lot of these people are experiencing, the drainage. And when I contacted the county, whoever was in charge then, a few years ago, he's no longer with the county, but he said it wasn't the county, an issue, the county, it wasn't their issue, it was Department of Transportation or something. And then later, Mr. Mears came out, and he was kind enough to look at it and make some recommendations. But the funny thing was, this all started after the county had been out repairing a broken water line. And I didn't make the connection then, but I'm kind of, after tonight's report, I'm making the connection. And I, my property was damaged, and I actually thought that my property taxes should be reduced because my property was damaged, and it doesn't work that way. But it was really never resolved. It has gotten better because a lip was put on the edge of the road in front of my property. That helps to, to, you know, make the flow of the fall, waterfalls, it go into the ditch, but the ditch is actually like what that man said, it's full.
Ms. Schaefer, your time, your time's up, and yeah, if you want to, you're in my district, if you want me to come, and Mr. Mears, we can definitely look at it, continue to look at it with you, if you don't mind. Thank you for bringing that before us. Ms. Barnes?
Susan Patrick.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Council members, Mr. Callison, Mr. Upchur. I am a resident of McCormick for 24 years. Excuse me. My name is Susan Patrick, and I, like I said, I've lived here for 24 years. Thank you for giving me the time to discuss what I hear others have brought before you. I have a house water filter, and this is the filter from the last, and the one before it was just as bad. Now, this is, I have a house water filter. This is what the filter looks like going in. It's changed every two months or more. But this is, this is what we're drinking. This is, this is what the people without a water filter are drinking. I'm drinking this, we're bathing in this, we're doing our laundry in this. And I just think it's imperative. Water that people in Savannah Lakes and a large part of McCormick County are using for drinking, cooking, and bathing, this is beyond concerning and should be a concern to everyone. People think that the big water tank outside of McCormick is just our water, but no, it's not. We are in desperate, if not critical, need of another water tower to serve the impacted areas of McCormick County. This should be a priority to every person in power. This should make this happen for the health and safety of a growing populace of McCormick. This is beyond serious issue, and we need your driving force. I know, like everything else I've heard tonight, it all boils down to money. And I, for the powers that be in Columbia to recognize the seriousness of the major health issue, the people of this county need immediate action. And instead of waiting for the next six months or, in fact, I haven't even seen a water, what do you call it, a, the thing that they send out, which says what your water is in it? Would, would you consider having this tested to see what contaminants are in this? I just live in a normal house on Elam Drive, and if everyone is getting water like this, whether you're in, in town, out of town, north town, we need desperately, we need a new water, water tower. Is it possible to have that tested? Or is it possible to have our water tested?
Typically, this is y'all's time to speak, but I'm gonna ask you one question. How many times have you called Clearwater, our water department, and made those complaints?
Just a couple of times.
Keep doing it. And because they're doing flushing, some of the areas that Mr. Cook has been doing a survey on, some of the troubled areas, trying to flush some of these lines to improve the water quality, and we are doing total county-wide fire hazard flushing.
Well, perhaps part of this problem is, is that we don't get notified of those. I don't, we weren't told to boil our water when we're going through this. I mean, I'm gonna be changing another one in a couple of weeks, but we weren't toward, told, no one was told to boil the water, and I never got a notification about it.
Only, and I'd like to say that this is, this is y'all's time to speak, and I'm just trying to help, because this continues to be our major, number-one concern, but if there's a water line break, we're required after a certain period of time to do the water notification process. I don't know if you're on the alert system, the email system, Ms. Barnes has.
Is that starting recently?
It's been, it's been going on for quite some time.
Okay, I did not receive any notification at all.
You need to make sure, Ms. Barnes, will you take her name, as to make sure that she gets her proper notifications?
We appreciate all the help you can give us.
We're very concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments?
No one else.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will finally enter into our decision item. I know, Mr. Jennings, do you want to do a, to amend, amend our agenda to include number nine, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We'd like to amend the agenda. This is, our toll is breast cancer, a wedding this month, and that we would like to add proclamation to the agenda to recognize this month. This would be number nine. I don't put it like.
I've heard a motion to amend our agenda, number nine, for the proclamation of breast cancer month. Do I get a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor of adding this to our agenda, right hand, please? Okay, so be it. At this time, we will make a decision item, or it's 2507, or it's creating a McCormick County Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee. This is our second reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Point of order on this, I know we have two ordinances, back-to-back, Ordinance 2507 and Ordinance 2508, that are on the same, virtually the same subject. One, the first one, which we're, and which we're doing the second reading, is the establishment of a committee to evaluate proposals for project funding from the accommodation tax revenues that we are getting from the, from the state. The second ordinance would establish an additional 3% tax that is collected on the same basis as the, the ordinance from which we are deriving our revenues at the present time. I think these two ordinances are inextricably, inextricably linked, and it's extremely difficult to discuss one without discussing the other at the same time, because I think some of the issues are, are very, very similar, and they need to be, they need to be coordinated. I would therefore like to make a motion that we defer consideration of Ordinance 2507 for tonight, and then go ahead and consider Ordinance 2508 as a first reading, and then on the, the next monthly meeting in November, do, do second readings on both of these. And that, that way, we can, we can discuss them in tandem and not have to discuss the committee without also discussing the, the additional tax.
I just want to be, Mr. Hamby, if it's okay, I just want to distinguish the two for those who may not be aware. So the first item, Ordinance 2507, that is to create the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Ordinance 2508 is to impose a local accommodations tax. The Ordinance 2507 for the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, that is for the state accommodations tax. So it is separate from the state tax, and it is not, we do not have to follow the same regulations and procedures. What Mr. Cook has recommended is fine according to the ordinances, but I just wanted to distinguish the two. There's a state accommodations tax, and that is the first ordinance being considered, and the second ordinance being considered is a local accommodations tax. So they're separate but similar.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could mention, Department of Revenue contacted the county about having the advisory committee, because we receive in excess of $50,000 of state funds, and we have, we didn't have a committee. They said we're way past it. So that's the purpose of Ordinance 2507, is to form that committee for the state funding. And as Mr. Upchur said, the, the Ordinance 2508 is for the local hospitality tax, which can be up to 3% in the unincorporated areas. And if a count, if a, if a town has not adopted a local hospitality act, the county can impose a 1.5% tax, hospitality tax, in the town. can impose a 1.5% tax, hospitality tax, in the town limits. And actually, with the consent of the town, they could impose a 3%. But it works on that. And I verified earlier last week with the town of McCormick, for example, that they have not imposed any local hospitality taxes. So ordinance 2508 would allow the county to impose a 3% local hospitality tax, be paid by the vendors, the ones that own the facilities, just like the state tax. It would be 3%, it would be handled by the, I missed Upchurch here, and the county has to handle all that funding. DOR handles the state funding. The county has to set up a system, and I've been looking at different systems through different counties. They have to set up the system. I mean, either way you want to handle it, that's, that's fine, you can bring them together, but they are separate, a separate institution.
I understand, but my, my whole point is, we would probably want both the state revenues that we're collecting and the new revenues that we're, that we're collecting evaluated by the same process.
They don't have to be.
I know that, I know they don't have to be.
What I'll, what I'll say is, that's up to the discretion of the council. In other communities, the local accommodations tax is handled separately and very differently, but it's up to the pleasure of the council to determine how to do that.
Agreed.
I think, I think, I really don't wanna get into the discussion of the, of the issues right now, but other, other counties that have done that have also run into very significant problems with respect to the administration of that, that we may want to avoid.
So what I hear, you have an amendment?
Yes, I'm, I'm simply proposing that we defer the, the second reading on ordinance 2507. Proceed with the, the discussion and first reading of ordinance 2508, and then have second reading of both of those at the November meeting, where we can discuss the second reading and the issues involved in those similarities together.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I had a question about the Accommodations Tax Committee itself. We had a deadline to have that committee formed, did we not? Would we be able to make the deadline if we defer this?
The deadline passed before I even got here.
Oh. Okay.
That's, that's why DOR contacted.
Yeah, we got money waiting.
We get the advisory committee on board.
We need to move. We need to get it. Yeah, okay.
So we've heard, we've heard Mr. Cook's amendment to ordinance 2507 and 2508. Do I have a second? Here are no second, it falls dead, so now I'm going back to 2507. This is a second reading. We had a first, do I get a, do I do a second on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I, do I get a second? As it's written?
As it's written.
All right, I got a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have some issues.
Okay.
Excuse me for one second for you, sir. Can you cut the fan off?
It's a little cooling.
Ain't got no hair on top of my head.
It's old timers, it's a little chilly up here.
Oh, boy.
Mr. Cook?
Yeah. I, the, the issue that I have with respect to this advisory committee is that I think it is applicable to both the 2% that we are receiving from the state and also the 3% that we, we may implement with the next ordinance, ordinance 2508. And that's, that's the reason that I suggested that we consider these in tandem rather than, than separately. I have some serious problems with respect to the internal management of the expenditures that are, are coming under the, the possible passage of ordinance 2508. And I think that we need to, we need to consider those, those together. And so regardless of what the, what the council does this evening, when the, when ordinance 2508 does come up for a second reading in November, I'll be making some, some recommendations and amendments to that so that, that we could combine, combine these processes. I don't think we need two separate processes to evaluate what we're gonna do with the accommodations tax, particularly when the uses to which those taxes may be used is virtually identical, regardless of whether it comes from the, from the state 2% or whether it comes from the local accommodation tax, which, which can be up to 3%. I'm also very, very leery of what's happened with other localities that have not used this kind of process with respect to their own local accommodation taxes. And they've run into some, some rather serious difficulties and controversies that I think we would be well to avoid. And I think we could, we could do that by using this process for the, for the 3%. So at this point in time, I'm not going to, I'm not gonna oppose this, but I think that we need to do some serious consideration with respect to this ordinance in conjunction with ordinance 2508 at the November meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anyone else? My final comment was, I think it's very important that we move forward with item number one to 2507 because it was, we're way past due. It's basically creating a board to help designate the projects that the state money will be going to. I, too, as Mr. Cook on 2508, have a lot of concerns that we definitely can address at our second reading next month. So here are no further discussion, all in favor of 2507 approval, right hand? Carrie's, appreciate it. So 2508, which is an ordinance imposing the local accommodation tax in McCormick County, we've discussed it in detail. This is title only, so-
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
Got a first and second? Any further discussions on title only?
Mr. Chairman, just one question. When we start looking at the local sales tax, accommodations tax, the types of industry and businesses that will be taxed by this, I'm a little concerned about who and what will be affected by us adding this on, and was wondering if that, we can make that part of a discussion in the very near future about what organizations in the county would have this tax imposed on them, and which would not, and how that might play out in terms of the local economy.
I just wanna, five second comment. The majority of these funds are coming from the state parks when people stay at, in their cabins or their units. Whenever we, last year when we got hit by Hurricane Helene, those numbers significantly decreased, but the overwhelming majority of these funds are coming from accommodations at the state parks.
So campsites, too?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do have some major concerns with this.
Can we discuss them next month? I mean, we've kind of, this is title only, we need to move, move on.
I understand, I just want to, to make a comment with respect to Ms. Brown's comments, is that we have a lot of different people who could be covered and to whom this, this tax would be applicable, including all of our builders and developers at SLV who are, who are providing housing for marketing guests. And the process of collecting revenues from them, enforcing this, and, and tracking that internally, based on what's happened to, to other counties and municipalities, I think is a real danger. So I've got, I've got, I'm gonna have some serious objections when we get into this in depth.
Any further discussion? All in favor of title only, right hand, please? One opposed?
Opposed.
Ordinance 2509, ordinance amended in section 2, 2731 of the McCormick County Code, ordinance in section 3A of ordinance 89, 893-05, to revise the limits for purchases awarded by the county personnel, agents, department directors, and county administrators, council, council, to consider title only. And basically, what this is addressing is how much money can a department head or administrator be able to spend? I think he brought it to, Mr. Upchurch brought it to my attention, about like a 1960 policy or something, about, was it $5,000 or something?
500 for some.
500. So I'm sure there'll be a lot more discussion on that, but do I get a first on that? And then we'll get a-
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'll have some objections at second reading.
Okay, good, good. I appreciate that, Mr. Cook. Here are no further discussion at this time, title only, ordinance 2509, all in favor, right hand? All opposed? One? Okay, ordinance 25-10, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of amended and restated solid waste service agreement with the Three Rivers Solid Waste Authority to extend the terms thereof through 2050, update tonnage commitments, and increase annual tipping fees, authorizing the insurance by the authority of revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $30 million to fund the construction of a new phase and other matters relating. What I hear, title only, and we had a great presentation from our Three Rivers folks.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I've expressed my reservations with respect to this, and I hope that we'll, we'll take a very close look at that and see whether or not there are any options that we may be able to pursue with respect to our legal obligations on that. That, that bothers me, I don't know whether we can do anything about it or not, but just, let's take a look at it.
Any further discussions for council? All in favor of title only, 25-10, right hand? Carrie's? Resolution 025, 0525, bonding of McCormick County employees, passing, council consider passing this resolution, we do it annually, bonding our employees, what I hear?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a first and second? Any further discussion on the bonding?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have, don't have a problem with going either way with respect to the, the bonding requirement. The only thing that, that troubles me about the authorization is, you look at the, the language of this resolution, it says, "The administrator is further authorized and directed to make such determination as to whether or not to use the blanket fidelity bond to replace said statutorily required bonds as provided by Act Number 58, signed by Governor Sanford on May 15, 2025," or 2005. I don't have, I don't have a problem with either one. What I, what I would prefer, rather than giving the administrator to make an authorization at his discretion, is for the administrator to come and make a recommendation to us as to which way we should go, and then allow council to vote on that recommendation. That way, council can make the recommendation rather than giving the administrator carte blanche.
Ms. Callison, do you have any comment on legally, on his concern?
No, the, the, the section that's references South Carolina Code 4-11, that's 65, and it allows for the purchase of a blanket bond. We found that that's actually been cheaper for the county and provides better coverage, I mean, higher coverage than the limits, which some of those are rather low for like probate judge and tax collector and clerk of court. It's all combined under one. I don't know how to address the, the issue about the administrator, but they've done in the past, we've, we've signed the bonds, we've gotten the bonds, have been signed, they've been enforced for I don't know how many years. Chris, you probably know, but it's probably been 15, 20 years.
Since 2005, I believe.
2005, 20 years. So I'm not sure about that. That's a council decision, it's up to council to decide how, how you want to handle that, but this is the same bonding, and we have to do it by resolution, same bonding resolution that's been adopted since 2005.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I would, I would recommend if, if we've been, if, if we can, if we wanna go to the blanket fidelity bond, then let just amend the, the language of the resolution to indicate we authorize the, the administrator to use, use blank, blanket fidelity bond to replace the statutorily required bonds. If that's what we wanna do, let's do it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Do I get a second? Here are none, it fails for vote at this time. I need, for those that support, resolution 05-25, all in favor, right hand, please? All opposed? We have one opposed.
Two opposed.
Okay. Thank you, guys, ladies. Number six, is council is consider funds for the water and sewer project in the town of Plum Branch, paying half the cost, not to exceed $25,000, from the water and sewer department. I'd like, before we make a vote on this, to kind of address this, since the town of Plum Branch came before council, there is several individuals that are historically restoring that little town, Bracknell's building. There's two apartments going in and a tea shop and possibly a pub, and there's an investor looking at the general grocery store. And not only, a major concern is the two existing businesses, Sanders Granite Company and the dock building company, Humphreys Dock Building Company, have been really hit severely hard with insurance increases because there's no hydrant on their side of the, the road. I think Mr. Sanders came to me, his went up to over 20 something thousand dollars, $7,000 increase. So this, very pleased that Plum Branch wanted to collaborate with us, that's historical since I've been on council, so very glad that they wanna work with us to save that little town, the historical value of it, and provide the safety that's being required by the insurers of all those buildings. So that's what this is about. They've already voted and agreed to, to pay half of this investment to get, basically bore onto the road, move the, move the water line from one side of the road to the other to have access to the back of those buildings, is what we will be voting on today. So council will consider these funds, what I hear?
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Got a first, a second?
Second.
Have a first and a second? Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to table this until council has been provided with a written request so that we have the opportunity to review it. You indicated that they had come before council to request this? I don't recall this.
I apologize for saying council, they have sent in their request to the administrator and Clearwater, water.
And why isn't that included in the, the packet that we have tonight?
No answer for that. But I do know that the critical situation that exists, if that, the guy will possibly lose all his historical credits, and this, has mentioned how important those are if this is not secured pretty rapidly.
By when?
We need to do it tonight if possible.
But when will he lose his historical credits?
I don't know.
See, that would be something that would be provided in the, in the written request.
Did you get his request?
I know that there was a request that came to me. I don't remember if there was a written request. I know that there were several verbal requests, and what I did is I, um, Chairman, we worked together to get some quotes for that project. We reached out to several, um, to several different companies to see how much it would cost. Um, we have the quotes in front of us, and the reason that the amount was twenty-five thousand dollars is because that is about half of the amount of the quotes that we received. But in terms of a written request, uh, I'm not sure I ever received one of those. However, there were several, several verbal requests, and, um, I have been working on this for a couple of weeks now, um, with the chairman to try to get some costs associated with it and provide that to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm bringing, been suffering for a long time. Now we got some investors want to come down to invest in Plum Branch again, trying to grow our county. This can be a win-win for everyone. Help our water department, it will have a tax base, to help them provide, uh, Plum Branch now, we got a business south of Plum Branch, that's fat big down there. That fire department, we need to help provide service, that'll keep the taxes down on that building. Because if they don't show that someone within the two miles rating, it could cause them tremendously. That could send them elsewhere. So I think that we want to see the entire county grow. And this is a good chance for tonight, by helping them, by not delaying this, and that this could be a win-win. We want to build a, a better relationship with the town of Plum Branch. They done voted on to do this. In their town, council meeting, it ain't say so, it's it's on. So I think it's the same. It's be a good, and for all, that we should work, continue to work together. By doing this, we could do, do other things. We got other, but Mr. Powers, we need to continue to work together.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make it very clear. I'm not opposed to this, uh, project. I'm not opposed to economic development, but I think it's, it is a mistake for the county council to be voting on projects, uh, for which they have very little information. The only thing that is, uh, in front of us, uh, is council to consider funds for the water sewer project in the town of Plum, Plum Branch, paying half the cost, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars from the water and sewer department. There is no information with respect to the urgency of this project, with respect to the justification for the project, um, and I am opposed to the precedent of acting on requests that are coming in on an oral basis. Um, I think if the, uh, if the council wants to support this, um, and if we've been working on this for two weeks, I don't see why there is a problem with having some kind of written justification in the packet that we can look at. Uh, I'm opposed to doing business on an oral basis because, uh, because I don't know what we're approving. Uh, we've had problems in the past in approving things on an oral basis for which we've not had information, and I'm not, I'm not going to be a party to approving it and establishing a precedent of doing this, um, without any firm information on which to base a decision.
It's been recorded now. You said, Mr. Upchurch said two weeks, but this has been in the process probably about three months. Uh, the, the project person has been contacting Clearwater and was going through our water sewer department, trying to figure, he actually has all the ear- engineering studies done, all that's been submitted to Clearwater. Now, Mr. Upchurch and I were invited to the last town hall meeting where the presentation was made to us, and, uh, because Mr. Upchurch, when I brought it to his attention, did, did, uh, his concerns were very similar to yours, and that's when I said, "Well, we need to, uh, attend their meeting and let them explain to us exactly what, you know, what we're try- what they're asking us to do." And as I was saying, at first they came to us wanting, uh, hydrant down behind all those buildings, told, for us to show up all the cost.
That's right.
And so I said, uh, I, you know, I, I mentioned to the chair, to the mayor, uh, Mr. Story, I said, "Is there any way that we can collaborate, collaborate together, uh, to make this happen?" Because I didn't think it would be an easy sell publicly. Uh, but the, it's very important. Uh, it's not like we're just springing this on now properly. The way that we approach council is probably not done in the best of manner. I definitely understand that, but it's not like a two-week pop-up thing. Uh, engineering studies have been done, presentation's been done. We've gotten three estimates come in, and luckily, the winning estimate would be, um, one of our own local contractors, the Bussie family. Uh, so we, you, we always love to award, uh, our, our projects to local contractors. So, uh, it's not just, um, you know, a spare of a moment, but I hear your concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for making my case. If this has been going on for months and we have the engineering studies, there's no reason why it shouldn't be included in the packet for our review.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In the future, we'll make sure that we do a better job. Mrs., Mrs., uh, Upchurch, you hear me? Mr. Tony, we just work on making sure. We learn as we go, to make, to do it a little bit better every time. And finally, we'll get there. So now I call for the vote.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe there was a motion to table for Mr. Cook, is that correct?
He didn't get no second.
He did, he did, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Did you get, you get a second to table?
No, the motion to table was on, uh, the bonding of county employees.
So, uh.
Okay.
Okay, you didn't make a motion to table, to table this one until, okay, so it's up for vote.
Yes.
He did. He made a motion to table.
Did I make a mo-
Until a written request.
Okay, okay, all right, he did. Okay.
Do I get a second on his motion to table? Here none, that, that motion fails. Uh, we've had discussion. I need a vote for, to approve. This project is, uh, requested. All in favor, right hand? Three, all opposed? One opposed. Thank you, guys. Council will consider appointing William, William Culty to subvanulate special tax commission replacing Craig Granger, who resigned to relocating out of state?
Some move.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion required? Here none, all in favor, right hand, he carries Ms. Barnes. Finally, no, not, we got one, two more. Council will consider appointments of council members to our stating, uh, standing committee, um, just to kind of brief the public on what's happening here. Typically, every two years, when there's, um, election, the chairman appoints committees, uh, to serve, uh, to, uh, for those individuals to serve two-year, uh, on those particular committees in which they're assigned. Well, the, all the committees, we were in the process. We lost our administrator. We were trying to find administrator. We had total turnover, uh, leadership change. I took, you know, the chairmanship, so it was, uh, we just kind of changed the names appropriately, but we did not follow the county's policy, uh, which that was supposed to have been done ten days after, uh, at that particular time. And so we approached, Mr. Cook brought these, um, these concerns up, and we went to our attorney to seek a resolution to this, and basically, what, uh, he has recommended, and it's totally up to us to decide tonight, uh, to vote on the committees that have been assigned by me. I can't vote because I assigned the committees, uh, just to formalize this, even though it's not exactly by our standing policy, which probably needs to be revised. So that's kind of my comment of, if Mr. Callis has got some more words on it.
I think you hit on the, on the key. The, the key things about this, including the election of chairman and the election of vice chairman, comes at the first meeting in January for chairman and vice chairman, following the general election.
Yes.
And you're, you're, you're elected as chairman and vice chairman for two years until the next general election. Um, the same with standing committees. The standing committees are appointed for a period of two years, and you named the chairman. Now, I'll mention this also, um, that you, as the chairman of the county council, are automatically the chairman of, uh, the, um, committee on, uh,
Administration and Finance.
Administration and Finance. You're, you're substituted there. So really, it's very little change, uh, except Mr. Banks is no longer with us on council, so he has to be replaced, and, and, uh, Mr. Moore's being replaced in his. So what I would recommend, in order to clear this up, it shouldn't be a problem, uh, naming the committee as, as you've done so. It needs to be voted on, and you don't vote, Mr. Chairman, but you have to receive the consent of two other members of county council.
Understood.
To their appointments. Yes.
Here in that explanation, do, uh, get a motion to accept, uh, these appointments as been presented?
Some move, Monsieur.
Do I get a second?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Before we, I got to, well, I need a second before a question. Second.
All right, now we can have a discussion.
We looked at these committees and talked about them. Um, one of the things that Mr. Cook had mentioned was that there are people who may want to serve somewhere else or do something different. How do we take that into consideration in this process? Or do we?
The chairman makes the appointments.
Okay.
And then has to ask for a consent of two, of the remaining four members of county council. Um, and if, if consent's not given, then they aren't approved, then you have to come back to the drawing board. I mean, that's all, all you can do at that point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with approving this for twenty twenty-five. Uh, my objection would be to include the approval of this for twenty twenty-six, um, which, uh, is not, um, uh, is, is not that far away. And if you want to do this for, uh, for twenty twenty-five, I wouldn't have any objections. The, the opposition that I have to this for including twenty twenty-six, um, is one, it's premature. Um, the, um, um, our ordinance, if you look at the, uh, the county ordinance, um, indicates that, um, the standing committees will be appointed, uh, after, after the first council meeting in January, and it doesn't say for a period of two years. Uh, it just, uh, it's, it's silent on that. Um, as, as Councilwoman Brown has pointed out, uh, we have had no opportunity by council members to, um, um, comment with respect to the appointments that they might like to have, uh, the committees they might like to serve on, and I think it's, um, it behooves the chair, um, with respect to these appointments to at least seek the, um, the input of the people who are going to be appointed to those committees. Um, I also believe that the, uh, the current status and structure of the standing committees is outmoded. It, um, it in, because of the way it's formulated, in which, um, you only have two members, and other council members are prohibited from participating, um, in the deliberations of the committees on which they do not serve, it creates an information silo, and it also inhibits the consideration of cross-cutting issues that involve more than one committee. Um, and I think it's, um, uh, it's not conducive to the kind of consideration of issues that we need to be doing today. Information silos, uh, I think went out with the, the Model T. Um, it's also, the way this is structured, it's also designed, um, to keep some council members from participating in committee deliberations. Um, and I think that's both unnecessary, and it's inconsistent with the designation of the council chair as an exio officio, an ex officio member of all the standing committees. I mean, the reason that we limited this to two members was so that we would not have to announce those meetings as formal council members, or meetings. However, if you look at the, um, the legislation, uh, the Freedom of Information Act legislation, the requirement for holding a committee meeting is exactly the same as it is for holding a county council meeting, and that is, you have to publicize that, uh, you have to notify the media that you're going to do that, you have to post that, you have to give, uh, unless you're going to close it as an executive session, you have to give the public the opportunity to attend, and having made the chair an ex officio member, you've just appointed three members to that committee. So it's exactly the same whether or not you have a, an open county council meeting or whether you have a committee meeting. It doesn't matter if other council members attend and participate, because you've already announced the meeting that way. Um, fine, I, I think it's, it's, um, it's also precludes, um, if we designate people for twenty twenty-six as well as twenty twenty-five. Uh, I've already announced to, to the, the council that I intend to introduce a proposal for a restructured committee process, and I think if we, uh, if we appoint, uh, members for twenty twenty-six, it'll make that, um, make that an academic exercise.
Mr. Cook, I-
One, one, Mr. Chairman, one, one aspect to this, the, the, uh, the ordinance does specifically state that members of standing committees should serve for a term of two years. Um, that's in the ordinance, and that's what it states. It, uh, provides for that. Um, I mean, even, even if you appointed them for two years, um, amendments can be made to the ordinance, probably needs to be looked at. I mean, some of these ordinances are, um, very old, go back to nineteen eighty-three, you know, some that we've been looking at, but that's up to council on that decision. You've got on the, on the, I guess, at this point, um, you got your motion. It's been suckered, having discussion, and then you'll need to move to a vote.
Mr. Chairman, the only comment that I would make on that, uh, you want to appoint, uh, appoint for two years, um, the advice that came out from, um, Ms. Barnes, when she circulated this, was, "Please note what committees you are on and be mindful of attending a meeting that does not fall under your committee. Three or more council members in attendance is considered a quorum." Now, um, I think that-
Is that not state statute?
No. Well, three members is a quorum, but because you're, uh, the chair is appointed as an ex officio member of that committee, um, you've got three members in attendance at all of those meetings anyway.
And you attend every single meeting?
I have been kicked out of meetings.
Because there's a quor- you, because of quarums, and-
Not because, not because of a quorum.
Yes, sir.
Because, because the, the, the quorum, um, when you have a committee meeting, you've got three people appointed to that, and you announce it, that you're going to have a meeting of that committee, uh, you've alr- you've already, um, complied with state law to announce it.
Mr. Chairman?
One, I want to comment on this.
You do it.
He made a statement that most of our committees are not publicized. All the committees that are attended, particularly CTC meetings, the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, I sit in the back room. The, the chairs of these committees, um, run their meetings according, just as we run our meetings, and I know our last planning and zoning, we had three, uh, three councils show up and commented, and so the question came back to us, "Don't that consti- don't that, uh, make a quorum when we, three of us are at any place?" quorum when we, three of us are at any place unannounced like that? So we're just trying to clear this law up and, and, uh, because I know particularly one of the most embarrassing situations is when we were at Tri-County, we had two councils from Edgefield, we had two council members from Saluda and two from McCormick. You showed up there and those councils went crazy on Mr. Jennings, who was the chair. How does we get away with showing up at these meetings? They are publicly announced and trying to do input and influence decisions in these committees is what we having a problem with. So I agree, uh, it's an old, it's an old policy. We need to definitely revise it and, uh, you know, that, that definitely would be a committee I'd like to put you on to.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Chairman?
I'm trying to figure out what we need to do tonight.
There is, Mr. Chairman, there is definitely a difference between when a pub, a meeting is publicly announced, that is not a council meeting.
I see it's ran like a.
And if, and if three members show up at that, for example, the meeting you were talking about the other night was a, was a, a planning commission meeting. Now, a planning commission meeting was announced, it was open to the public, and there is absolutely nothing that prohibits three council members from showing up at a planning commission meeting. Um, and the same thing for the, uh, for the Tri-County meeting. Uh, you got it.
You're probably the only one in the state that does that, but.
You've got, if you've got.
We need to move forward.
Yeah, we need to move, the chairman, we have home rule laws.
We can change our policy.
Yeah, but then we got the father, they defend the home rule and county council is set up to serve on these committees, standing committee, not to run these committees. Just stay there and if you need, if they need some advice, we don't got our, kind of order, because we getting in our.
Kind of their business.
Uh, dictating to what's going on. That's why we got to be careful, because we, we've set ourselves up for a lawsuit, because people watching what we are doing. We, we shouldn't let ourselves get involved with that chairman, but, and that chairman start depending on, on me or anyone. But we just there, just in case they need some advice and we ain't gonna make no kind of decision. If they need to know something, it need to come back to county council. And, uh, so we kind of got away from what the law says and it told, we need to get this back in. If you do orders, let that committee run their business, do their business. We sit and observe, if they find, they run into something that they need some, some intelligence from the county council, then we bring it back. But what we do, we start getting, like I said, if we get there, we done made a decision before we got to county council. We can overstep our boundary, we'll foul. So that's why these laws are set up.
Mr. Chairman, there's a difference between a committee meeting in which only the, only the members of that committee can vote and having a majority on, on county council. Now, if the committee members vote to refer something to council, that is not a council decision. But if you, if you set the committees up so that you have three council members on each committee, then yes, you are having a, um, a possible quorum of the county council. So what's, so what's the difference?
I'm not gonna stay here.
No, sir.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You're, you're an ex officio member of every one of the committees without the right to participate. You have no right to vote on those other committees except for the, uh, administration and finance that you're chairman of by virtue of the, of the ordinance. So you actually do not have the right to participate, um, in that, and you have no vote.
See, I have a presence sometimes to influence. They, people know your presence can be dangerous, because you can influence decision by, by being showing up, and you don't want to do that. Okay?
All right, we've, we've discussed it enough. Uh, I think that the solution to this is we know that definitely need to modify and revise our, uh, policy. We've got a year and a couple of months to do that. Uh, in 27, after the November election, uh, these committees have existed for a long time and I, and at that time, uh, let's change, work on the policy and then have a, uh, a process where the council can submit their request for what committees they would like to serve on for the next chairman's term is what I'm recommending, because, uh, we just really, uh, basically you're gonna do what you want to do and that's fine, laws, you're not breaking the law. And, uh, we just bringing up what concerns that come to us. So, uh, I'm gonna ask for a vote, all in favor of these committees as presented with the right hand? It carries. And, uh, make a note, we will make a note of what I discussed about, uh, a policy change that, uh, I know Mr. Upchurch has found several of them that we definitely need to look at in the near future. Uh, we do have scheduled workshops coming up, we're gonna do a lot more of those than we've done in the past to start working through these issues. Uh, I know we got one more item, uh, but yeah, that's kind of where we are tonight on that. Council, um, passes the number nine, which is the proclamation of breast cancer month. Uh, you know, appreciate all that participated in the activities this, this month as we recognize it. So Ms. Barnes has a copy of the proclamation, uh, we do this annually, so I'm asking for a vote on this proclamation.
No movements, Chair?
Second.
And there should be no further discussion, all in favor, right hand? It carries. Thank you, thank you much.
Chairman, no discussion, but if we could pass this in September of next year, so that'll be in effect for the whole month?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I think it was just an oversight on.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
On the scheduling, because, yeah, yeah. So we're just trying to make sure we cover it.
Yes, sir.
Because as Mr. Cook thought, we, you know, we donated some money last month for this month, it just, we just missed the proclamation.
Right.
Uh, at this time, could we read through our committee reports and, uh, make, make them kind of reading, because we, we kept the public here nearly two and a half hours, if possible.
Real shortly, we, um, attended the state superintendent education address that was down at the school. Um, we attended the Democratic Party fish fry. Um, we've been participating in the good news club at the elementary school and also attended the event last night, the red, white and blue forum, which was very informative. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ma'am, Mr. Cook.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, um, uh, the, the last thirty days have been extremely busy and, uh, I'm not going to go through an itemized list of all the, uh, the meetings and webinars and, uh, conferences, uh, that I've, uh, attended, but I would highlight just a few issues. Um, obviously, the, uh, the Calhoun Walls con, uh, contract and the status of the USDA loans for which, uh, the county may be responsible, uh, are major issues. We've been interrupted in terms of getting information on that based on the fact that, um, the, the US government has shut down. So we're having a hard time getting information from, uh, USDA rural development with respect to the exact amount of those, uh, loans. We hope that the government goes back to work and we'll be able to, uh, resolve that. I've made several trips over to the, uh, uh, the Calhoun Falls, um, town hall, talked to the, the clerk and, um, uh, one of their, um, council members, and they simply cannot confirm, because they don't have the paperwork with respect to that, uh, those loan, uh, those loans. Um, concerned a little bit, and I discussed this last night at the, um, um, the forum, we need to consider and get some demographics with respect to the impact of some of the cuts that are being made in Washington with respect to programs that we are implementing at the local level, whether it's WIC or SNAP or whatever. Um, I think they're going to have some major impacts and we need to find out, obviously it's gonna be a little bit difficult to find out when the government's closed, but we need to, to start collecting some demographics on those particular programs to figure out what the impacts are going to be on our residents and what we might do to, uh, alleviate some of the, uh, the problems that are occurring. Um, we may need some, um, additional work training programs if there are people who have to go to work in order to, uh, continue their benefits. So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we need to, uh, look at. Exactly how we're gonna gather that, I'm not sure, but it's, it's something we need to do. Uh, the South Carolina Housing Authority has been, been having some, um, uh, serious discussions with respect to how they should spend their scarce resources. And the issue that has come up is whether or not it is cheaper or more cost-effective to build a new resident or residents or to renovate an old one. And what they are finding is that in many cases, it is cheaper to build a new one than it is to renovate an old one. So, uh, a lot of the, um, the, the requests for renovations that are coming in are getting a very hard look. And, um, uh, that might work to our advantage in some cases, uh, if we can put together, um, a group to go seek, um, some grants to build some new, um, new income, uh, residents. Um, we continue to have drainage issues in SLV, we've discussed that ad nauseam, but the, uh, the increase in construction at SLV has been exacerbating that and we need to, uh, do some consideration with respect to how we can alleviate that, perhaps by, um, changing some ordinances in the, in the county. Finally, um, after the millage rates come out, came out, I did, uh, put together and issue a tax calculator. Uh, I've gone through that, uh, and checked that out. Mine came out, uh, within a penny of the, um, of the amount where it should be. But what I'm encountering, and it's, I don't know whether this is particularly unique with respect to, uh, the village, is that a lot of people who have been receiving, um, the homestead exemption on their tax for, uh, uh, their tax bills for years and years, for whatever reason, there was a glitch in the auditor's office, and a lot of them are not receiving, um, those homestead exemptions. So their taxes went way up, they were very concerned about it, they've been contacting me and they've been contacting the auditor's office. And, um, so if you know of people or if your, if your tax returns were abnormally high, check to make sure that you got the homestead exemption to which you're entitled, uh, because if you don't, then your taxes are gonna be a lot higher than, um, than, than are warranted. So those are my issues.
Well, thank you. Mine went up, so I gotta check mine way up.
I can't wait to get home.
I just opened mine today, I said, whoa, I thought we didn't go up much. Mr. Moore?
Uh, I, I attended, um, the recreation football game, um, for the free hot dog night, and they, they did a lot with, with little bit they had. Um, and Ms. Carmen Bowie, Mark's wife, has got some of the best hot dogs you'll ever had. I had every intention of, uh, being at the breast cancer walk, but I was dispatched to a wildfire in Calhoun Falls that the dam overlooked and was there till daylight, so I, I couldn't make it the next morning, but other than that, that's all I have.
Bowie, thank you for your service.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We attended, uh, Family Life Center, we be cutting at Piedmont Tech. Get chance to go to Columbia, tend the rich management conference on September twenty-fifth. Participating in the gold, gold rush parade on September twenty. Upper Savannah Council Government continued to buy quarter to serve here in McCormick County, like them. Get opportunities to, uh, tend and walk in the breast, breast cancer awareness, they had good support and they thinking they, they financed it, I hadn't heard, told it yet, but they thinking they may had a chance of doing more this year than they did last year, and that, and that was their goal to continue. We thank for all you, for your support, because breast cancer done hit all of us. We all know someone in our family done had breast cancer. So moving forward, we can raise, do more research that is enhanced quarter to life for all. If you ride south on Highway two twenty-one, south of Prom bring, seven miles, maybe eight miles, you got new reception. So we, we thanking DOT for the done, and we want them to start walking south from McCormick, uh, down to Prom bring. We get that, two twenty-one, twenty-eight, be a pretty good highway to travel for the next couple of years.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jennings, Mr. Upchurch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share with the public that we're excited to announce the new leadership we have in our emergency services department. Sherry Domas, she has been selected to serve as the new emergency services director. Uh, Sherry previously served as our deputy director, she led our emergency management operations, and in the interview process, she received unanimous support from the staff. And so we're excited to have her as our new director. Rodney Free was selected as our new deputy director. Rodney has fifteen years of emergency management experience. He most recently served as the lead paramedic and EMT instructor at Piedmont Tech. He has over twenty years of experience as a volunteer firefighter. And interesting fact, Rodney and Sherry worked together in Abbeville about ten years ago. So they're gonna make a great team for emergency services staff.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sweet, sweet. Basically, I have to apologize, uh, the month's been pretty tough for me. I've had cataract surgery, lens replacement and a hernia surgery, all. So I didn't make, I did make the advocacy meeting, but, uh, I know my colleagues do a great job representing the county and I do appreciate, uh, how everyone does participate in these community activities and, uh, y'all been jumping around a lot with me, so if I've been flexing, that's what it is. Bifocal lens, I don't know if I'm, if I get used to this or not, but anyway, I appreciate y'all coming out tonight. It's been quite a long, productive meeting, a lot of, a lot of information has been shared. Um, like I say, it's, I'm very positive the town hall meeting that I did attend, had to attend last night, went very well. We had about seventy people, uh, great information from our legislators and the questions were very appropriate and, uh, we've just gotta do a lot more of these town hall meetings, workshops, uh, the number one thing that I got cornered afterwards, it was just continued transparency of what we do do, uh, and planning, strategic plan that Mr. Cook's very, very anxious to get going the first of the year, uh, now that we've got the drainage study, the road study, all these studies, uh, people's gonna expect us to put together some sort of plan, short-term, long-term, midterm. Uh, we all know it's gonna take a lot of money, but, uh, you have to, I was a scuba diver for many years, you have to plan your dive and dive your plan, if not, you end up on the bottom or in a shark mouth or something, but anyway. Uh, good night, everyone, thank y'all.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, before I forgot.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Um, we've set our next district town hall meeting for District Five, it's going to be November the eighth at two o'clock PM at the Bethlehem Church of God Holiness, um, down three seven eight, headed towards Saluda.
Thank you, ma'am. When is our workshop too?
November the sixth.
November the sixth, yeah.
At six o'clock.
I think the sixth is.
Yeah, six o'clock is.
It's a meeting with CPW.
CPW, that, that's important, yeah. And that just goes to show y'all that we are in a, we are taking this water situation extremely serious. It, I lose sleep over worried about if our, if we have a failure of our water system and we don't have backup water supplies. Uh, so we've called a meeting with CPW to find out exactly what they can do, what they can provide in case of an emergency, if Calhoun Falls was to shut down, whatever that case may be. Water quality will continue to be a problem, but that we're gonna work on, but supply is our number one thing right now. We, we are dependent on everyone for our water. We don't have a water processing plant and, uh, so we. so we gonna continue to meet uh continuously uh to to resolve these issues because the public has gotten really involved. That's what it takes. Uh, and we've, we've got our jobs to do, uh, to, you know, we're McCormick County residents too, and y'all's concerns are our concerns. We pay taxes. I, I got a bigger tax bill, so. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion required. All in favor? Good, good night, everyone. Thanks.